In a few minutes, but it is 6:35, so I will call the Tuesday, December 1st, 2020 meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. First, can all the councilors hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Say no if...
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, can I make a, can I make a motion for a five-minute recess to try and get Counselor Sweeney on the phone?
So, motion for recess, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, but, uh, motion for recess by Counselor, uh, Fantasy. Is there opposition to recess? I'll declare some recess for five minutes.
Sounds good.
See if I can charge my iPad. It'd be easier for him to just use a telephone line. Hey Esther, are you calling in on your landline we were talking about the other day?
Yes.
Like the, like the rotary one?
No, it's got push buttons. The rotary one's in the dining room.
I love it.
Okay, when we resume the meeting, if anybody notices, we're gonna keep an eye out, if anybody notices him come on, uh, call a point of order so that I can establish that he's on and get him recorded in the minutes at the point that he starts participating. Okay, Counselor Sweeney, I see you there, can you, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yep, there you are.
Okay.
Yes, we can.
Sorry for that delay.
Thank you. It is 6:40, our five-minute recess has expired. Uh, I will ask the council to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, those in the room, please rise. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge.
I do this by the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
A nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. I will take the role. Counselor Ladine. He is just rejoining. Okay, all councilors, please take your mutes off, I'm taking the role, Counselor Ladine.
Here.
Counselor Van Sickle.
Here.
Counselor Bender.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor Fantasy.
Here.
Counselor Elm.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Sutherland.
Here.
Counselor Kern.
Here.
Counselor Dahlbeck. We have a quorum. The approval of the minutes from the November 17th, 2020 regular meeting and the November 23rd special council meeting.
Motion to approve.
The motion is by Counselor Bender, who made the second.
Uh, Elm.
Counselor Elm made the second. Uh, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item 4.1 is a resolution introduced by the Community Development Block, uh, Community Development Division to amend and approve the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan, authorizing staff to submit plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This is a public hearing, if there is no objection, I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody on the call, uh, on the video, or, there is nobody in the room, does anybody wish to speak in the public hearing? Does anybody like to, would anybody like to speak in the public hearing? Would any... Would anybody like to speak to the resolution?
There was some, someone said they'd like to speak.
Sorry, Counselor Kern, were you saying something?
Someone did chime in, said they wanted to speak.
Someone had chimed in that they didn't want to speak to the resolution.
Is there a speaker for the resolution?
Um, yes. My name's Millie Roundsville, I'm with Northwest Bus Community Services, and I just wanted to speak just for a mo, on this DDBG.
Yeah, uh...
Can you hear me alright?
I can hear you okay. Uh, Ms. Roundsville, you will have three minutes to speak in the public hearing, you may begin.
Alright. I just wanted to express my thank you to Jason, Krista, Mayor Payne, and the council for your support of the programming in terms of trying to address those that have been most vulnerable during the pandemic. Currently, all of our shelter facilities are operating at some reduced capacity. Harbor House, Solid Rock, and Casa, in the hotel vouchers, we have extended our first allocation. This resolution and revised plan will provide us some additional resources. I also wanted to mention at the food pantry, we had some additional support for that that ended in September. Uh, with this resolution, we'll be able to get some additional funding to help with our drive-by service. Since the onset of the pandemic, we've distributed over 2,500 boxes of food behind our Tower Avenue location. Eighty-seven percent of those recipients being City of Superior residents. And I also wanted to add that while some of our prevention funding has been a little behind, we partnered with the governor and our state association and since the beginning of November back to the Garephones in June, we expended that entire $258,000, now leaving this resource, our only resource available. And part of this resolution is also amending us to be able to help the very low-income homeowners with their mortgages. So I just wanted to again thank the staff for all their work with us on this. Thank the council, hopefully for your support of this resolution and revised action plan. And we're looking forward to continuing to provide services to those most in need here in the City of Superior. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak in the public hearing? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing and approve the resolution.
So moved.
The motion is by Counselor Dahlbeck. The second by Counselor Bender.
Second by Counselor Bender.
Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Uh, before I move on, just a reminder, councilors, if I, I, I appreciate what you all just did right there, calling out if somebody was trying to speak, if you hear opposition, people trying to gain the floor, uh, point of order will catch my attention fastest, uh, and then I'll try and recognize you and we'll resolve whatever we're missing. So thank you for that. Item 4.2...
Mayor Payne, if you'll just note that I abstained on the vote, thank you.
Uh, the minutes will reflect that Counselor Van Sickle abstained from item 4.1. Uh, item 4.2 is a presentation by Deanna Erickson, the Lake Superior National Estuarium Research Reserve Director, regarding the collaboration with the City of Superior. Uh, Director Kadat, would you please introduce Ms. Erickson?
Thanks, Mayor Payne. Um, it's hot off the press, the University of, uh, Wisconsin-Madison Extension just introduced the new director of the Lake Superior National Estuarium Research Reserve. And Deanna Erickson is with us tonight. She was the education coordinator for the last nine years, uh, for the reserve and, uh, roughly the last nine months or so has been serving as the interim manager. Uh, you might recognize her from the Rivers to Lakes program, and, um, she's just spent, uh, a tremendous amount of time on development of the estuarium as well. Through the reserve, Deanna's been an incredible friend and partner to the City of Superior, and you'll see on the agenda tonight, there are several items, uh, that speak strong to the collaborative efforts, and thanks again for joining us, Deanna. And she has a brief presentation for you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Erickson.
Thank you so much. Alright, I'm gonna, I'm sharing my screen here, just a second, it's gonna be weird. Let me see yourself, and then we'll fix it. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
I can.
Okay, great. Okay, I just wanna provide a few, um, updates. I know several of you went out, uh, on our, our 2012, our small research boat, a couple of years ago, but, so some of this will be a bit, a bit review, but, um, the reserve is one of 29 national estuarium research reserves in the United States. Um, right now, we are the only one on a, on, uh, Lake Superior, and there might be one soon coming on Lake Michigan as well, as part of Wisconsin. Um, we're housed in University of Wisconsin-Madison Division of Extension, with 70% of our funding coming from the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration. We're also, uh, based on here on Barkers Island, and we have these very complex relationships that make up the reserve. So, we're UW Madison Extension employees, we're on the UW Superior campus, and we're on land that's owned by the City of Superior. The City of Superior makes up, um, the, nearly the majority of our, the land included in the reserve as well. So we're situated where we are in part because of the, the significance of Lake Superior and of the St. Louis River watershed. So this map, um, the colors on this indicate the amount of stress on the, on the ecosystem, on the Great Lakes, on the water quality. The bluer the color, the, um, better condition the water is there. So you can tell there's a pretty significant difference between Lake Superior and the rest of the Great Lakes. We also have a really small watershed, and there's only about 600,000 people in it, and so human impact matters a lot here. It's part of why we were situated where we are. And then we're on the largest US river flowing into the largest surface of fresh water on earth, and that estuary, that river wraps entirely around the City of Superior. There's been a lot of changes, however, so this is a 1824 William Henry Bayfield map. Um, and if you look at, the thing, part that I always notice is, um, Connor and Rice is pointing here, if you look to the satellite image, you can just see how much the estuary, how much the shape of the estuary itself has changed in time. We have a lot of human influence here. That has led us to work, all of the work that we're doing right now on the St. Louis River area of concern, which I know you all have heard about, and a lot of these restoration and remediation projects have been in our community. So the reserve is situated here because the, the river itself and the, the Great Lakes is so important on a global scale. Um, and so our work is in part to contribute research, education outreach, and stewardship to, to that, um, that effort. And so, just gonna show you a few things we've been up to lately, this is, um, to some degree, the wild rice growing on the right of the screen is, um, not chewed on by geese, because of the fence here, and then the other side has been, uh, had geese in it. So trying to solve this restoration problem has been something we've been working on. We have a lot of students that do work with us, this is Hannah, who was working with us this summer, trying to look at water quality and geese. We found geese. None of you will be surprised. We've seen a lot of that, um. We've also been looking at changes in the wetlands as a result of water level changes in Lake Superior, and so it's seen a lot of really big changes, particularly in the last five, six years. Um, we do winter work, uh, this is a student named Victoria, she's, uh, measuring oxygen levels underneath the ice. We have a lot of really low oxygen, um, areas that aren't super well explained in the St. Louis River estuary. And then this is in Pokemina Bay with some fifth graders from Bryant, um, looking at understory plantings underneath ash, which we're still working on, we've been working on this research project, again, um, we look at what, what plants, what trees grow well underneath ash as we're using Ash Tablach for. They're on education programs, like Linda mentioned, the Rivers to Lake program, um, most of these, I think, are Superior teachers. Um, where we help them do outdoor and place-based education based on Lake Superior. The idea there is to really give them hands-on opportunities to engage in science. So they're from Cooper, we're, um, collecting crayfish, we're a US EPA research project that, unfortunately, the scientists weren't able to capture crayfish for, but the fifth graders totally outdid them. And then of course, we have the estuarium, which you all familiar with. So we use that for education programs and public programs. Um, so we reach a lot of people, so we've had, since we opened, a lo, over 11,000 visitors to the estuarium. Um, a lot of that, or a significant number was contributed by the Ice Festival visitation that we've had, that's awesome. Um, and a lot of students and a lot of teachers. So Superior was core, uh, was central to, uh, the designation of the reserve itself, partially because of the land base and partially because of advocacy on the part of the City of Superior to situate the reserve here. Um, so, you know, really, we owe our existence in a, in a big way to the City of Superior. And, uh, one of the, one of the things I'd really like to make sure we do is, is contribute back through time. So we've been able to do that so far by sharing our space, this conference room, which, um, folks use in meetings a lot. Um, participating and, and doing some of the work and providing some of the funding for events, which has been wonderful, like the Ice Festival. Um, and then, you know, something I'm really interested in that we started on with the Pokemina launch that you're gonna hear more about tonight, um, is leveraging funds from Reserve and NOAA, um, places where we, uh, grants that we have access to, um, to benefit these areas that are part of the city and also part of the reserve. So this Pure Municipal Forest, Wisconsin Point. One of the other ways we're gonna do that is this year, we're hiring a stewardship coordinator, so somebody to deal with invasive species, somebody to deal with green plastics, somebody to help address erosion issues, who can work on some of these on-the-ground problems that we have. But we can only really do that in partnership with you all. Um, the Pokemina launch is one of those projects where we used, um, funding that the reserve system has access to, um, to get something really great, I hope, done this year. I think there's possibilities for us to also help in the future with the Bear Creek Trail, so as that moves on to land that's part of the reserve, I hope you, um, consider reaching out to us, and we'll try to work together on, on providing funding for that. Um, we also are working on a proposal right now to deal with coastal erosion issues through nature-based infrastructure. Um, and I think that that could have some benefits long-term. We don't know how to do this well here on Lake Superior yet. I think that could have some benefits long-term for the city. And we're also, um, at the same time, working on a proposal to do water quality monitoring after the area of concern is deleted. And one of the big reasons that that's really important is because of blue, the potential for blue-green algae blooms or harmful algae blooms in our area, um, a couple of which have been spotted around Barkers Island in the last couple of years. So, um, helping to design a detection, uh, process, maybe a lab, or an early warning system. Also, one thing we'll be looking to, um, in the next year, at the end of the next year, is we need a little more office space, we're adding people, and we're hoping to expand this building slightly, which would increase our lease to the city, and also use up probably a little of the land that's over on the left side here, but just a little bit. I'll come back to it for that. Um. We have a friends group that's really getting going, so if you know anyone who's interested in joining, and I think you'll be hearing from them, uh, down the road as well. And I just wanted to let you know, the St. Louis River Summit, I know many of, several of you have attended, and it's gonna be virtual this year, which is not a surprise, um, is coming up March 1st through 3rd. So, uh, we'll be trying to get notice of that out to you, that's a great opportunity to learn about everything that's happening along the river in terms of research and restoration. And I think that's it. I don't know, I don't know if, uh, question thing at the city council meeting, but I'd hopefully take some if there are, and if not, thanks for hearing me out. And I really look forward to working with all of you. Um, I'm really, I'm really proud of where the reserve is situated, and, um, I think it's a really good opportunity for the, for the city to really leverage what we have access to, um, in terms of research and in terms of funding and in terms of information that can help us make better decisions, so. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you, Director Erickson. Uh, are there questions for the director? Or comments?
Great presentation.
Thank you, Counselor Bender. If there are no further questions or comments, I will thank Director Erickson. Item number...
Please do.
Item number five is correspondence to be filed, this does not require action, but if you want further information on any of those, please contact my office or the clerk's office. Item number six is the mayor's report. Uh, we have a lot going on upstairs, councilors. Uh, I, I spent a significant amount of time on the phone with the Douglas County Public Health Officer to try and, uh, assess any potential impacts and strategies for, uh, dealing with the fact that our neighbor in Duluth, the whole state of Minnesota, has a lot of their businesses closed down, and if, uh, we are at outsized risk for that, and if so, how we should respond. Those are ongoing discussions, there are no decisions made yet, uh, but of course, uh, we, we look to follow public health advice. So i- if anything comes out of those conversations, uh, I imagine we'll announce that very quickly. I will likely, almost certainly, actually propose an extension of our state of emergency at the next council meeting for a few reasons, uh, most of them the same reasons as before. We are still in a pandemic, we will still be in a pandemic at least for the month of January, and, uh, I expect more state and federal aid, we will need to be in a state of emergency to respond to that, but also we, it, it is always possible that we may need to respond at a local level, but, uh, for the most part, we, we really wanna be able to maintain policies that we've put in place to respond within the city to the pandemic, but also to track any expenses in the event that we, uh, can get reimbursed. Uh, a reimbursement is looking to be more, uh, uh, better than we thought it was gonna be at the beginning. So it is, I, I think, always valuable to keep that going. Uh, we have been reviewing a number of weather-related policies, I won't go into too much detail there, but, uh, there, there, we're looking at a number of changes this winter to improve, uh, uh, our response to weather emergencies for, uh, everyday citizens, but also for our employees. Uh, some of that will be coming forward to committee soon. Uh, I've had a conversation just today with the Department of Revenue about the terminal tax, I promised you some answers on that by February, so those discussions have begun. Uh, we may, we will likely need a special meeting. I'm, I'm likely to call another meeting, uh, next week. Uh, this is, this agenda is missing a few things, and I'll take responsibility for that, but we're missing all of the, uh, business of the Public Works Committee, as well as a fairly important, uh, alley assessment rebate that was all supposed to be on the agenda tonight, and combination of coronavirus Thanksgiving and, uh, just good old-fashioned mistakes, uh, prevented those from being on there, and I, I think it's very important that we pass those in a timely fashion, so I'll likely call you back a week from today, but I'll follow up on that in email. Uh, the, just a couple more things, the comprehensive plan, I need to form a steering committee for that, and I would like to include one or two councilors, and before I volunteer for you, uh, I was, I, I'd like to see if anybody has an interest in participating in that, that steering committee for the comprehensive plan. If you do, reach out to, uh, myself and Director Cirque as quickly as possible. Uh, and finally, we, uh, are going to be starting discussions, I think, next week on a permanent digital or remote attendance meeting policy. I mentioned to you, we'll have to update our ordinances for that. I, I think that can be largely an internal discussion, we'll invite the council leadership to that, but if any councilors have opinions on how councilors should be allowed to participate remotely, I'd like to hear those opinions. If you just wanna send me an email about just early thoughts you have on it, that could be helpful. Before the pandemic, uh, this was not a settled policy, there is no single common way of doing this throughout the state of Wisconsin. Uh, the pandemic has brought, uh, has brought us all pretty much in a lockstep, but before that, we all had a smattering of policies, and Superior was pretty out of the ordinary in allowing remote attendance, so, uh, if, if you've got strong feelings, let me know those. That is the extent of my report, I have two items of business for you, but they are essentially the same thing. I'm, uh, recommending approval to make the golf course committee an advisory committee, who will report to the city council on items such as capital project repairs, approval of the operational budget, seasonal rates, review operational reports, public complaints, and address citizen concerns.
Motion to approve?
Uh, just, I'm actually, uh, it, I think we could take these at the same time, because I'm also recommending appointing the existing ad hoc committee, and appointing to that committee, the golf course committee, Keith Kern, Jack Sweeney, Barb Hoag, Robert Colby, Lindsey Grasky, and to appoint Troy Clark for the first time, uh, to the committee for a term expiring December 21st. Is there a motion, a second, to create the committee and make the appointments?
Motion.
Second.
The motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion?
Mayor question.
Counselor Ladine.
Just, what does this do, I mean, as far as changing, changing the golf course committee, I mean, is it just title? Is it...
It, it makes it a permanent committee, so this was not even really a committee before this, it was, it was a little more than a task force that we convened to help select the, the new management company for the golf course. So, uh, when the previous manager was retiring or le, uh, ending his contract, we put that out for bid, and we convened this, this body of councilors and citizens to help us review those bids, select the company, and help that company make decisions in their first year. Uh, a number of the members, the company, and the staff have all agreed that it's been a very helpful body. So this makes it a permanent committee of the council to advise on issues related to the golf course.
Okay.
Further questions or discussion?
Fairment.
Uh, Counselor Sutherland?
I think that the, oh, Kern. Counselor Kern. Being on the golf course committee through the transition from going from renting the course to the basically campers taking over in the city, having, I think it's been a great transition. Um, the committee has done an amazing job, and that the council knows that this committee's worked very hard over the last couple of years, or the last year and a half, I should say, for this transition. A great job, and I think that's needed that this committee stays on board.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item 7.1 is the business of the Finance Committee from November 12th, 2020. Chairman Sweeney, would you like to give a report?
Yes, thank you. First of all, all these things that we've been, we've been busy in the Finance Committee also, but I, I have to give kudos to the Finance, uh, Department, because all the things that have to come to us have to go through, and they have to prepare them. So I'd like to thank them publicly for that. The first thing that, not necessarily in order of importance, but we did pass the hotel motel tax, uh, budget, and so that's passed. We, uh, add information about the time clock software. That's passed, and that's moving through. That's going to be a great improvement to, to improve the payroll system, so that's done. Um, the liability insurance, uh, budget was passed. That probably doesn't pass a lot of interest to a lot of people, but it's extremely important, so that passed. Hospitalization and dental rates and the, uh, the health insurance, uh, fund, self-insurance fund is passed, so we're done with that. We have that moved on. Um, uh, Tyler Peterson from the, uh, Chamber of the Tourism reported that the, which is surprising to me, is down by 10%, but that is, I think, is an amazing figure. It's only down by 10% considering what we've been going through. In the last item, we just recently passed the golf course rates for 2021. So, uh, any, I'll certainly try and answer them, but, uh, uh, we've been busy, as all other committees are, I'm sure. So, uh, thank you for giving me an opportunity to at least explain on some level what we're doing.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, I, I would just clarify, the hotel motel tax budget was held, not, not passed. Uh, everything else did pass, though.
Oh, did I say that? Did I say that was held or passed?
Are there any questions for the chairman?
I'm sorry, I was saying correctly, it was held, yes, thank you.
Are there any questions for the chairman? If there are no questions, uh, I will entertain a motion to approve all of the business of the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Who made the second, please?
Kern.
Uh, Counselor Elm made the motion, Counselor Kern made the second to approve the business of the Finance Committee. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item 7.2 is the business of the Human Resources Committee from November 16th, uh, the report from Chairwoman Ludwig.
All right, um, at our November 16th meeting, um, the HRC Committee approved, uh, memorandum of understanding and MOU between the city and the Superior firefighters, um, IAFF Local 74 changed their work schedule from a 24-hour on, 36-hour off work schedule to a 48-hour on 96-hour off work schedule. Um, if approved this evening, this change will commence on January 4th, 2021, um, and operate on a six-month trial basis, and to be evaluated by both parties, um, at that time. Um, and also, we approved, um, a shared office assistant contract between this, uh, the city and Douglas County. The office assistant will be physically located on the, um, third floor of the government center, um, to help out with, um, you know, duties for both the city and the, and Douglas County. Um, we also approved a request to fill a full-time, uh, like parks, like, like equipment operator position. Um, this position will be added in 2021, and it'll replace, um, three seasonal labor, labor positions. Uh, this will create more, uh, continuity and efficiencies in the workforce, um, within the Parks and Rec Department. And that is all I have to report. Can I answer any questions?
Questions for the chair? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion to approve the business of the Human Resources Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Ludwig made, uh, Counselor Bender made the motion, I believe Counselor Ludwig made the second. Uh, is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. The business of the, item 7.3 is the business of the Plan Commission from November 18th. Uh, this was a little bit longer Plan Commission meeting, largely revolving around the discussion, uh, on item number four, the ordinance for the special use permit. The other items were fairly routine, but did include another small business grant. So, uh, I mentioned to the council before that, uh, I would be hosting a discussion on potential changes to that at the end of the year. I will be presenting a proposal, recommendations, or at least the seeds of discussion at the next Plan Commission meeting. So I, I know a number of counselors, uh, have, uh, have very strong feelings about the Small Business Grant Program that's been very popular on the council. So if you are interested in, in attending, that will still be a virtual meeting. Uh, most commissioners call in, but, uh, feel free to join us for that. Uh, I will entertain an emotion, a motion to approve items one through three from the Plan Commission.
So moved. Second.
The motion is by Counselor Dahlbeck, the second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, what's the, what's, what's the purpose of just approving item one through three?
Uh, ordinances by, uh, our city ordinance, or I think state statute, requires us to read ordinances, so they can't be approved with other things, so they always have to be approved individually.
Yeah, okay, so you're just doing the two together?
Yep. Yes.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion on items one through three? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item 7.3, item number four, is to approve ordinance Oscar 20-4229, creating a special use permit allowing solar farms in all zoning districts.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Second.
The motion is by Counselor Elm, the second by Counselor Fennessy. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item 7.4 is the business of the Public Safety Committee from November 18th, uh, the report from Chairman Sutherland, please.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Um, item number one was kind of a unique one. That was the recommendation to purchase, um, a five-alarm Arctic compressor. We already approved that the day before in City Council. So this was just something that was on the agenda for, I'm not sure what reasons to talk about it more, that was received and filed in committee. Um, item number two that we talked about on, during this meeting, um, we referred it back to Council in our last meeting, and we talked about it in our Public Safety, and it was, uh, recommendation to approve of the ordinance, um, oh, 20-4230, amending section 86-13, as a chronic nuisance premises, the abatement plan with placards. It caught some attention in our last, um, couple of City Council meetings ago. We referred it back, and, um, we discussed it again in Public Safety. Um, it's been referred to Public Safety twice. On this, the third time it's on the agenda. It's, uh, first time it was tabled, the other two times it was supported unanimously by all, uh, committee members. Um, last time, we had some good discussion on it. Um, I want to thank Counselor, uh, Ladine and Vance Sickle for calling in and asking questions. Um, it was a pretty good, good conversation, in my opinion. Um, I'm asking that, um, we do approve of this at this meeting, and I don't know, Mayor Payne, do I have to pull these two items apart and vote on them separately, or should I entertain the option of going, voting on them both at one time?
Well, we, we actually only have the one item to vote on. The, the first isn't for action, so.
Okay, thank you. Well, then, that being said, um, I, since we've referred this to committee twice already, and we had discussions, um, I, I don't want to refer it back to committee. I'd rather see it be voted on, on the floor here, and I would like to see, ask the council to support it with me. If not, that's their decision. But that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number two.
Second.
I'll second.
The, first, I'll read the ordinance. Uh, the Public Safety Committee is recommending approval of ordinance number Oscar 20-4230, amending section 86-13, paragraph C, chronic nuisance premises, abatement plan of the City of Superior Code of Ordinances. The motion to approve is by Counselor Sutherland, and, uh, who made the second?
Uh, Counselor Fennessy. Oh, or Dahlbeck.
Uh, Nick is weighing in and saying it's Counselor Fennessy. Got it first.
Oh, okay.
We'll get you next time, Counselor Dahlbeck. Uh, discussion on the ordinance.
This is Counselor Sweeney.
Counselor Sweeney, please.
Counselor Sweeney, uh, is the, is the, uh, police chief in attendance?
Chief Alexander, are you on the, are you on the phone?
I am.
Phil Alexander, could you explain, uh, I assume you're in favor of this, could you explain a little to us, please?
Sure, uh, you know, the nuisance abatement ordinance has been around since 2004, uh, I guess the long and short of it is, what happens is, if the police get called at the same place, uh, multiple times, over and over again, once they've taken three enforcement actions, which typically arrests for, uh, the ordinance list, different things, fighting, underage drinking, trespassing, prostitution, and so on, that once three enforcement actions have been taken, you can enter the abatement process, which brings together the, the building owner and/or tenant to try to come up to a plan that would get it into compliance. Uh, if it doesn't go into compliance, it, you know, the ordinance then goes to an enforcement side, which, you know, increases the penalties to the property owner, uh, if, if the nuisance isn't debated. That's been around since 2004, and none of that has changed. The, the change would be by adding an eight-and-a-half by 11 or a single-page piece of paper to, uh, onto the door or visible from the, uh, premises that's under a nuisance abatement. So that'd be a place that's already been visited by the police multiple times, resulting in at least three enforcement actions on separate, different days. Um, and it would alert officers that the house has already been put on notice and that, and has a plan in place to gain compliance. So if they're there for a violation, well, obviously, one of those would probably take a little more seriously. Um, it was discussed at the public, you know, we do have some ability within our, our digital record system to flag the places, but it doesn't always work. Uh, furthermore, different officers, officers work different shifts and may not always know which homes are under abatement, and that would be kind of a quick way to trigger to them. For, you know, multi-unit dwellings, if somebody's looking for a final lease or, or take-up tenancy there, it certainly would be an indication to them that maybe there's a problem on the property if, if there was a, yeah, a placard on the, on the building. But ultimately, that's, I guess, what the change is, whether or not to allow the placard to be on. The placard would gain the contact information of the landlord, so if we get called there while they're under a nuisance abatement plan, that we have a quick and easy way to contact the landlord to try and resolve whatever's going on. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Mayor?
Counselor Ladine?
Yes. Chief Alexander, I, I want to thank you from, uh, the last Public Safety meeting. You answered some of the big questions I had, especially when it came to, uh, mental health, domestic abuse calls, that those will not be considered anything in relation to this placard that would get put on there. There's still, you know, a, a feeling and something I have about labeling a house a nuisance. And while I can, I, I agree with the abatement plans and the process, what I would like to see, hopefully, and maybe I am going to make a motion here, that, um, like we do, um, like we just did with the city attorney and, and the house in Billings Park, I would like to see council approval before a placard is placed on anyone's door, and the City of Superior labels them a nuisance, that it should not just be the police, it should, this should be a decision of, of council that these placards. So I would like to make a motion to add, with council approval, the contact information as required by the plan shall be placarded by the chief or his or her designated.
I'll second.
Okay, Counselor Ladine, uh, just a moment, please. I need to get the text of your, you made an amendment, correct? You, you moved for, to amend, Counselor Ladine? Just a moment while I pull up the exact text so I can follow you. Could you? Could you read your amendment again?
Uh, my amendment would be to add, with council approval, the contact information as required by the plan shall be placarded by the chief or his or her designated.
Uh, okay, so you will begin the changes with the words, with quote, with council approval. Is that correct? Your amendment is to add the words, with council approval, to the beginning of the changes, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Let me just jot some notes down. That motion is by Counselor Ladine, the second by Counselor Elm, is that correct? And, uh, is there discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, Mayor Payne, may I?
Counselor Sutherland?
It's an interesting amendment, Counselor Ladine. Um, it's a great idea, actually, but I just, I have a fear if, what if after a meeting, you don't have a meeting for two weeks, and this placard would really help out the neighborhood, it could help out a police officer in the time when they meet, when they want to use it, but they have to wait for the City Council approval. That's my concern there with it. Um, then the other part is like, maybe I'm overthinking it, but I just, for something like this to vote on, I'll need some time to talk about it, but I don't know where, um, if I could ask Chief Alexander to weigh in on this? Is that something I could do, Mayor Payne, or no?
She, uh, it'd be better if you asked him a question, but did, would you like to speak to the amendment, Chief Alexander?
Pardon me?
Would, do you, would you like to speak to the amendment at all? Counselor Sutherland is wondering if you'd like to speak to the amendment.
Yeah, you know, I think the amendment would be fine. I don't have any reservations about it. Uh, you know, the, the abatement process could still be started. It would just be the act, act of the placarding that would have to be delayed, um, but I mean, the process of meeting with the involved parties, that wouldn't be delayed by, by that vote, if I'm catching your Counselor Ladine's amendment, right, that's just simply the actual part of the placard.
Counselor Sutherland?
That's all I, that's all I have, thank you, Mayor Payne.
Is there further discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, Mayor Payne, if I could.
Counselor Fennessy?
Um, I, I guess I don't, I, I don't have a really strong opinion on this, but at what point do we allow our department heads to do what we hired them to do? Are we gonna, are, are we gonna next ask for council approval for every potpourri to be filled? Um, I mean, it would, a- a- at some point, we have to trust that our police chief, we've hired him, or her, in the future, to do a job, and we're entrusting that police chief to do a job. It's the same thing with e- every other department head that we've, that, that we've entrusted for that department. We don't, we, we don't ask the Finance Director for approval for every single thing that she, that she analyzes and that she does. At some point, we have to realize that we're not the experts for the police department. At some time, we have got to realize we're not the experts for public works, and we have to allow our department heads, who we placed in this position, to do their job. And, and I, I think this is a silly way of micromanaging our department heads, and, uh, I, I'm not even, I'm not even worried about the, the time it takes, the, the delay, the week, two-week delay. I think this is just a silly way to micromanage our department heads.
Further discussion?
I have a couple of comments.
Counselor Vance Sickle?
Thanks. Um, I guess I would just point out that we approve nearly everything that department heads, um, suggest. heads, um, suggest, but I, I attended the public safety meeting and I agree there was really great discussion and I, I don't recall which councillors were there, but to Councilor Sutherland's point, this has been referred back repeatedly and the exact same policy keeps coming forward despite that discussion. So, um, I guess in just trying to understand, um, the position that the police are in, it's my understanding that this is so outrageously rare, um, the council would consider a placard almost never. So the amendment actually makes a lot of sense to the people that were a part of that conversation and have been since, I have been since October twenty eighth. So that's just about six weeks ago. Um, so it's been a long and in-depth conversation. Um, nobody's micromanaging anybody, but we are charged with the public trust of overseeing every department head and that includes the police because we have to look out for residents, not department heads with all due respect. So the best, the best way that I can understand this policy is at the very best case scenario, it does nothing. And in the worst, it has a lot of potential to hurt already vulnerable populations. So, um, that includes victims of domestic assault. And, you know, when you think back to the beginning of this meeting, I don't know how close the councillors here are to homelessness, but we are, we are allocating hundreds of thousands of dollars to talk about prevention of homelessness. And then five minutes later, this is what we're talking about. But either way, you know, we don't want to inadvertently target families that are surviving in poverty, um, or tenants. And I think that I, I'm having a hard time seeing who it's helpful to, if it's landlords or, or tenants or landlords' neighborhoods. And to be quite honest, there has not been a reason presented yet to why this would actually be beneficial other than the neighbors will know we're doing something, but at the same time, it says it will be in a, um, a hidden place, but it's eight and a half by eleven.
Point of order, Mayor?
No.
Uh, Council Fantasy. Hold on, I, hold on. What is the, Council, uh, Council Van Sickle, there's a point of order. Council Fantasy, what is your challenge?
We're, we're getting way off track with the, the amendment.
No, we're not.
The Council Van Sickle.
This is a conversation that you are not a part of.
Councilor Van Sickle, I need to hear the point of order. Council Fantasy, what is your challenge?
We're, we're getting way off track of what the point of order, or what the amendment to this motion is.
Uh, the order is, uh, the point is not well taken. This still seems germane to, uh, the, the subject of the amendment. Council Van Sickle, continue.
Thank you. No reason has been offered to why this will benefit the community and that's no disrespect, but I, I will be, I mean, if you want to talk about point of order, all of the eye rolling and backtalk can really stop. So while there's no disrespect to the members, the Commission on Communities of Color will review the ordinance in practice in one year's time because we do have problems with policies not being applied easily across the city. That's just true. So we'd like to see how it is applied. And I agree again that the, the department has not been able to articulate a problem and they have articulated, the solution already exists digitally. I, I don't envy any house that's going to have this on their properties or the neighborhoods around them. And I, I simply cannot have on my conscience a policy with this much room for improvement. And quite honestly, solid policies protect the police, protect our residents, they protect this council and, and that is our job. And I, I, I'd like to second Ladine's amendment because it is so rare that we prosecute our citizens like Ms. Schruler. It is worth the council looking at it together.
Is there further discussion on the amendment?
This is Councilor Sweeney. I'd like to ask Council Ladine a question, please.
Uh, ask your question, Councilor.
Thank you. Council Ladine, what, what criteria, if it, if this does pass and it comes to the city council, what criteria is the city council going to use to determine whether we give the police department the go ahead or not?
Um, cri- criteria is that, I mean, I would say, Council, it, it is almost giving the okay. I mean, I feel if we are going to put a piece of paper on someone's door and label them a nuisance, um, that comes from the city and the city i- is saying that you are doing something wrong. That need, that should dictate council approval. That, that we agree as a body along with this department that this needs to be done.
So the, the criteria, we, we wouldn't change it in the criteria, we'd merely change to get more of an approval through the city council. Is that what you're saying?
Council Sweeney, the, uh, Council Sweeney, I'd like to answer, the way the amendment is worded, there is no criteria beyond the council's approval. Every councillor will make their own decision for approval. Every council will make their own decision based on the information presented by the police department.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Is there further discussion on the amendment?
Mayor Payne.
Councilor Sutherland.
Thank you. Just one last thing, like when you, when we, I feel like our concern here is putting a piece of paper on someone's door and that, that we shouldn't be doing that. But by approving of this amendment, we're going to be putting this sheet of paper, not only if it's approved on the door, but on the agenda for everyone to see, an address and everything else. So I feel like the, the harm that some of us think we're going to do with a piece of paper will be a lot worse if we have to give the city council approval during a meeting that's agenda.
Is there further discussion on the amendment?
Mayor Payne.
Councilor Kern.
Oh, oh, about the amendment and going back and kind of addressing back what, uh, what councillor the, it's like, so we currently have an ordinance in place that allows this to happen and it's time to get to the point where certain ordinance cannot, the ability to do, to it somewhere to come up. Probably trying to accomplish by, by doing this. So similar to what some other of the colors have said, so we have an ordinance in place, but we don't have the ability to enforce it. We're now, in these cases, act to, to approve or disapprove. Is that, is that what we're trying or what council is trying to ask?
Uh, the, the, what the amendment would do is before, because it's precedes the rest of the language of the ordinance changes, it would only subject, uh, the placard to council approval. The rest of the ordinance would remain the same and the police chief would still be able to create an abatement plan as normal, uh, uh, without council approval. Before the police chief can place the placard, however, council, uh, he would have to receive council approval. That is what the amendment would accomplish.
So run us through our current process right now. If you were to blind.
Oh, you want, you want me to explain the, the process of the existing ordinance?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay, the, um, uh, I don't have it pulled up, so I'll ask, uh, the, the police chief and the city attorney to fill in any holes here, but the, what happens if, if there are, the ordinance defines what nuisance behaviors are. It's a series of other ordinance offenses. Uh, if the, the, the residents of a property, not including the property owner or the landlord, if the residents of the property, uh, commit three of those offenses that trigger enforcement action, a fine, arrest or a warning in the space of a twelve month period, then the police chief may invite the, uh, the property owner to a meeting to create an abatement plan. If that plan, uh, there, there's a short period of time, a few days, I believe, where, uh, the, the landlord gets that plan in place. And then if during the life of that plan, there are further violations, in the first say hundred, I think hundred and twenty days it says, if there are further violations, uh, it can trigger a fine. Uh, if there are violations of this ordinance, it can trigger a fine at that point. All of that is the existing ordinance. Uh, anything to add to that, uh, Attorney Prowler or Chief Alexander?
No, I think that's about right. Um, one of the additional things with the ordinance allows us to do is, you know, in the case of something where they're really tying up police resources, we can actually go after the, the costs of, uh, police response after the nuisance continues beyond an abatement plan.
So, so what the police chief just said is in addition to fines for violating the ordinance, we can also bill for any other enforcement action we take. Anything to add, Attorney Prow?
Thank you for that.
Councilor Kern, the floor is still yours.
So what we're looking at is the ability to have the council have the over.
No, we shouldn't.
Through due process or whatever it goes through. We're working about almost a year since at some point, they've been allowed through that, that process and we're looking at professionals to be hired to, oh, to make sure that they're safe and secure.
Uh, I, I didn't catch everything you said, but, but, uh, but I think what you're asking or clarifying, the council does not intervene for the creation of the abatement plan, but under this amendment would intervene before a placard is placed. The abatement plan, the chief can still carry out. Council approval must be given to the placard. That is, that, that is the amendment.
Thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none. We have division, so I will proceed by roll call. The motion is to amend, to add the words with council approval to the beginning of the changes. So the first sentence will read, with council approval, the contact information as required by the plan shall be placarded by the chief or his or her designated on the exterior of the property in conspicuous locations, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, are there questions about the motion? Yes passes the motion, no defeats the motion. Proceeding by roll call, Council Van Sickle.
Yes.
Counselor Bender.
No.
Counselor Sweeney.
No.
Counselor Fantasy.
Sorry, I was on mute. Uh, no.
Counselor Elm.
Yes.
Counselor Ludwig.
Yes.
Counselor Sutherland.
No.
Counselor Kern.
No.
Counselor Dahlbeck?
No.
Counselor Ladine?
Yes.
The, it is seven yes, uh, I'm sorry, four yes, six no. The motion fails. The main motion is to pass the ordinance. Further discussion on the main motion. Hearing none. I believe there might be division here as well, so I'll proceed by roll call again. The motion now is to pass the ordinance. Counselor Bender.
Yes.
Co- oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Sweeney.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Elm.
Yes.
Counselor Ludwig?
No.
Counselor Sutherland?
Yes.
Counselor Kern?
Yes, yes.
Counselor Dahlbeck?
Yes.
And Counselor Ladine?
No.
And Counselor Van Sickle?
No.
The motion carries. A special committee, I'm sorry, the vote was seven ye- uh, seven yes, three no, and the motion carries. Uh, let me just make some notes here. Okay. Uh, we have no special committee reports, but I want to remind councillors that, uh, that if you are a member of a special committee or you know one of the chairs of the special committees, uh, all of, uh, those committees that aren't standing committees are free to submit reports to the council. Uh, you can, uh, just give us a heads up and we'll make sure that you're agendized if, uh, any of those chairs, even citizens, want to come and speak and just say what the, uh, special committees have been working on. If, obviously if there's business, that would be agendized. Under, we have no old business and under new business, Counselor Sutherland?
Mayor, I, I can't pick up. Did you say that?
Sorry, you're breaking up, Counselor Kern. I can't hear your question.
Did you say special committees need to be itemized before they can speak?
No. Uh, uh, I just need to know that they want to speak, uh, and that can be pretty last minute if anybody wants to give a report. The only thing that would need to be agendized is if the council needs to take action, but we would handle that as normal. So if somebody wants to come and speak, that, that chair is one of our special committees, they are always welcome on our, uh, during our meetings.
Can I just add a few words, please?
One more time, please?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I can speak real quick. As far as Parks and Rec.
I, I, I'm sorry, I still don't hear your, uh, I still can't quite hear your question.
Can I ask a few words in regards to, please?
Oh, yes, if you, you want to give a report from, uh, the Parks and Rec Commission. Is that what you said?
Now, we, we do have one item that may be talked about, uh, as the agenda, but I would just like to give a, a large shout out to the Parks and Rec Commission. I, I know it's a commission that's normally, um, kind of underutilized about, but they've done great work the last couple of years, especially in the recent, uh, Bay Side Sound, wonderful job again this year in the midst of pandemic. They're, they're able to hold serious weather, sun was great. A big shout out to the Disc Golf Course Tyler and everybody golf. They've now realized all eighteen holes on the force and a great, great asset to the municipal force with, out there. Look forward to a great future with that as well as ranked, I believe, in the top ten, top five of, was one of the best courses for Disc Golf. Uh, we have also, uh, came up to an, the Hayes Court or Ballplex Management Agreement. I just want to give a, like I said, a wonderful shout out to the commission and everything that they've done, good job over the last year, including the master plan they put together in the year, year and a half. They've been really, really busy. I know we talked about a lot of other committees that the workload is high, but Parks and Rec shout out for everything that they've done as well. So thank you.
Uh, are there any other special committee reports? Hearing none. Item ten point one, uh, Finance Director Putz is recommending approval of the twenty twenty-one tax increment district budgets.
Most to approve.
Motion is by Counsel Bender, the second by Counsel Sutherland. Is there discussion? Who made the, who made the second?
So Kern.
Counsel Bender made the motion. Counselor Kern made the second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Uh, Public Works Director Janago is recommending approval of the state municipal agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the Tower Avenue Mill and Overlay Project scheduled for the twenty twenty-six construction season.
Most to approve.
Motion is by Counselor Dahlbeck, the second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion?
Second by Counsel Bender.
Any discussion?
Mayor Payne, did you, you said that's what we, twenty twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-six.
Jan says twenty twenty-four. Just want to make that correction. Thank you.
Uh, no, 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 it says twenty twenty. You're looking at ten point three, Counselor. This is for the twenty twenty-six construction season.
I apologize. Sorry.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item ten point three, Public Works Director Janago is also recommending approval of the state municipal agreement and state municipal maintenance agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the East Second Street US Highway fifty-three Mill and Overlay Project scheduled for the twenty twenty-four construction season.
Motion to approve. Most to approve.
Motion is by Counsel Fantasy, second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item 10.4. Parks Recreation and Forestry Director Kadat is recommending approval of the recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission to name the Bear Creek Trail, Bear Creek Trail dash Makwa Zibis Mikana.
Most to approve.
Second.
The motion is by Counselor Kern. The second is by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion? I actually have public comments from the Chair of the Commission on Communities of Color, Deanna Rader. But I did see she was attending the meeting. Did you want to speak directly to the council, Chair Rader? But otherwise, I will read this letter. The letter reads, "Good evening. My name is Deanna Rader, and I am the Chair for the Mayor's Commission on Communities of Color. I am writing this letter in response to supporting the recommendation that the name for the park trail be named Makwa Zibis Mikana, and in parentheses, Bear Creek Trail. The English translation should be in second to the name that was originally given to the park. It is a reminder that we are on indigenous lands, and out of respect, should have the native name first. I cannot stress the importance of why Makwa should come first. If it is a matter of being too hard to pronounce, I'm sure that is an easy fix where appropriate pronunciation can be shared, so that it is no longer considered difficult, if that is the case. But it is also important to know that English is not the first language spoken on these lands. Native American names are drawn from nature, and we see that in the name that was given to the trail for Wisconsin Point. Out of respect to the native community, by putting the native name first, we are honoring the land we are stepping on, and also providing a space for the native community to heal. Because not so long ago, natives were stripped from their language and forced to assimilate into the English language. This is a step towards healing. We have to remain vigilant in our stewardship in recognizing First Nations people in their language. I am asking the City Council to make an amendment and properly honor the sacred space of Wisconsin Point's vast area, history, and integrity by naming the trail Makwa Zibis Mikana, and add an English translation second in parentheses. Thank you, Chair Rader." Is there discussion on the motion?
Mayor, I will make that amendment.
Second.
Counselor Ladine has made a motion to amend so that the name of the trail will read, will be Makwa Zibis Mikana, and in parentheses, Bear Creek Trail. Is that your amendment, Counselor?
Yes.
And the second is by Counselor Elm, is that correct? Okay, is there discussion on the amendment?
I just wanted to make one comment that I did receive some correspondence from the Commissioner Brittany Behrens-Markren, who also asked that the names be reversed. And so the Ojibwe name would be first. In fact, I don't know a lot of places that actually have the English translation second, but that it would just be named Makwa Mikana. But either way, Commissioner Behrens-Markren also asked that we make the change.
Further discussion on the amendment?
This is Counselor Sweeney. I have just a question. Is this gonna... It's gonna be named, I understand that. Are there gonna be... Does this include signage or not in this motion?
This motion does not include any signage, Counselor. This is just a resolution to give it the name. However, we will sign it. We have the ability just in-house to create some fairly simple signs. But we could... This could certainly open up for more elaborate signs later. But no, this does not create the signs.
Then my question... I will not ask my question then. Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Let me just make the note. The main motion. Is there discussion on the main motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Final item of business is Resolution 20-13532, introduced by the Finance Director of the City of Superior, Wisconsin, appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the General City Government and the administration of the City of Superior, Wisconsin, for the year 2021, and authorizing and directing a tax levy to be spread on the tax roll of the City of Superior, Wisconsin, for the year 2020.
Most to approve.
Second.
Second.
The motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Ludwig to approve the resolution. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. We have... Is there any business by counselors? Then we have no further business and are adjourned at 7:51. Thank you, counselors.
Have a good night, everyone.